Okay, if we could all please stand, anyone having a hat, please bring your hat. My pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to have one question. I'd like to reverse the first and second orders on our agenda. So that the fire department can make their presentation, then followed by couple of comments.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm flipping one and two to have the presentation, the update by the fire department first and then followed by. Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, Laura, please make note, we have reversed those. Gentlemen, I'm still letting some people in, but we can do that while you started, if you'd like to start with this.
Are we able to get?
I'm going to attempt to do that right now. Let's get, what do you want first? Brandon, not if you can see that on the screen, because you're the only person I see. Perfect, alright, fantastic. Okay. Yep. You want the next one?
There we go. Okay, so, welcome everybody. So, for those who don't know me, I'm your fire chief, Richard Bobino. Thirty year member of that meeting, so I'm thirty one, and fire chief for the last six years. I just want to clear the air after what was posted a little bit online. So people on, well, in general, that use social media sometimes say things that they wouldn't say on a burger. And that's okay. Out of that came a lot of great questions that helped up to give you an information you're looking for. We'll never, I will never, probably find a Facebook post about that, there's a time and place. Also, I just want to clear the air that there's no secret here, there's no anyone trying to pull anything over the over the eyes of our, of our record. This building actually approved with the original fire out already. But we had two roads, we try and pull those through, or we could do the right thing and go through the commit process and do the latest call. And that's the route it shows. So, we got to get into just a tiny bit of history to understand how training works around the department. So if we go to that, then that is great.
Rich, can you stand closer to the microphone, please? We're having a little trouble hearing you. Is someone speaking? He has been muted.
Depending on time and in training. The BDFD has been in this nine town cooperation start every member town on the board of directors for school, I've been on that as the. Belgium, I saw an article that's posted on Facebook post today, that was in twenty twelve. And we're still waiting for that school, but we'll get into that a little bit more. It's which again, fall season. So, regional school, few things to know about, started in sixty four, hasn't went after school buildings, never has. At, I think, already that closed in two thousand, I turned that building in nineteen forty three. So, projects really look close, getting old, there were some issues with, at man and whatnot. So, like the article said, property required, and fall, early two thousand. Plans have been in place for the school construction for twenty three years. So, as a bill, same way a lot of things go fall from, but many people figured over the years, including governor, that I get one bill. So, how do you make a school work when you have them building, we have to burn them. So, for each member town takes a turn at both the training classes that are out. Required one and two, our fire training, live fire training is required, it's part of it. Currently, the regional fire school in Fairfield rented to live terms. So, that's our department, our department is required by those NPA to hold live fire training for its members at least annually. And our department has brought in the state fire academy, moving local firm buildings for training, trying to do at least twice a year. Pretty good interruption during COVID, for obvious reasons, not, they're just doing like, but it must be done. So, my knowledge, there's any guys that have just come through the academy. It's kind of how the state works with emergency services, right? For the first one, they call, and the last ones, they kind of run sometimes. So, at the state fire academy, the burn buildings are out of order, also. I, I just go in, okay, and you do, okay, so when we burn it, we'll ditch it. We have designated an entirely separate room on the host line. So the ramp is not getting on fire, so entire building doesn't burn down. So, they're too are likely to run from the state. And it's extremely difficult, practically, to schedule time to burn it all, trying to schedule the evening for night time. You know, these guys are big time payers, it's stuff they do sometimes. Okay, so we then have some of the question. How much, did the burn building, two thousand per visit, that does not include the time and the equipment of our neighbors that come to cover us while right at town, at a town. And there's a question about impacting smoke for every day that's dirty, they're getting all closer. So, burn up here is usually an cost to the town. So, in this proposed burn room, then the pallets would be used when we use floor to time. Along with that, no chemicals, no cellar, you have zero possible temperature to do the burn. So, that's just the second wire, the state school, the district repair, well, pretty much a union, everybody loves the potter. More fire potter. That's not going to work with what we're trying to do. And we'll get into a little bit more of that. So, actual usage of the building, live fire, certain rest, mentally, I have a road tech, rich training, EMS training, and whatnot. And that's what we'll be able to do in this building. So, he was responsible to manage the building and maintain. The BDFD have taken on this, so there was a question about who rents the BDFD, no one rents the BDFD. How would the BDFD be able to burn in the building without going through cooperating? So, here's what's interesting, so seven, for seven, ten years, a lot of our members, including myself. Not required, but this is what we do, we take action, so in order to even operate a burn building. You have to have certified people where you can even operate it. So, we have a bunch of us that are fire service instructors, and we have one of us that are fire business safety officers. So, to get this building and not already have that question to be, not educated, obviously. Okay, so, like I said, this project is a secret, it started with, you know, weapons, that's who we're told to start experiencing. So, we've been told, there's no weapon issue where we want to build it. Water containment, yes, in the building would be a tank, John Paul answered those questions, how does this is going to work for the people water. How often used by others, is often a desire, this does not mean every time we use this building, we're going to burn. How often used by others, maybe two times a month, also, does not mean burning every use. Rental of the building, to our, to our cooperative, live fire training, like I said, requires certified instructors and safety officer. Would reach for an even town coming over and said, hey, you want to rent your building, sorry, it doesn't really work like that, there's a lot of things that happen in place. Where you can use live fire. How much load off the minimum building, that I'm still not sure, you'll see later on, what we do for report. But we still have to figure that, still see what we get funded for, and then kind of put some numbers to that. Okay? So, burn building manufacturer warranties. Broker says twenty five plus thirty nine feet. What's important is, it says fifteen years from the burn room title, and five years for the structural warranty. So, who will be responsible to pay the building maintenance? The BDFD will go through rental of the building, to remember to be collecting, placing to an account, your marketing. That's named that name, BDFD also handle NPA for the military yearly inspection, and there's a five year re-certification. Through the rental fee. Quality of the construction, that means you should attend town to have this brand new burn building, that's the very fire Connecticut. Has had a building for twenty years, they're happy with the construction and quality, it's a good work rate for them. Okay, there was one question about the term liability to the town. So, town definitely needs to ensure the building, that's called, the building won't burn down, and the building won't boil. So, we don't really have to worry about that, but should ensure for hurricane and wind damage. So, then the question is, what about liability, other departments coming to our end? Just like when you go to any burn building, you have to provide a group of insurance and group of workers to come. And whoever is in charge of that department, at the firm, has to sign off, they're responsible to their members. And that, no, we have, that's why the competition is there. So, so this started back in, anywhere now, within the West, but we need to go in every, this is like, that fire town, or Amber. Okay, so, it started at, that's where we were told to start, and we did it. Then we had any of this, the West, I'm expecting people last now, starting, or any, this is both, just like again. Like I said, it's a secret here, we're not, we're not cool over anything, that's supposed to be where to find out the information. And as far as I know, four or five is the plan to join me and, and other buildings, for, for minutes, that's how I understand it, that's what we want. So, the cost was private. But what we got was not set in stone. Six ninety six, five five three forty eight, as of eleven fifteen, twenty years. How was the, how was the condition? So, we reached out to Roseville or Dogg's, we weren't even, we were trying to get through the process where it could count. To make sure we can put this building on and out properly, right? But then a grant comes available, and if you don't go with this grant, that, in my opinion, home, that's kind of what we don't go for with that. So, with high court grant in the amount of seven hundred and sixty, through Roseville or Dogg's, the grant through public community bonding brand, Rowair. How much will this project cost that now and in the future? So, the project, hundred percent, grant funded, future maintenance and plumbing will be through the rental. The town will have to pick up, you know, whatever they decide to insure the building for. Okay, benefits to the town of that, so, couple of questions I feel, why that name, why now? Oh, that's pretty similar. Why not that name, why not now? Okay, when your community is a part, is the hope of training firefighters, that's where you want to be, you want to be in the hope. We're a well-trained fire department, and we take our fire, and fighters all the time. And that's pretty much what you're going to say about it. I'm not concerned about the valley school, I am, because we're a part of it. But along with that grant, also come letters of recommendation, and Valley Fire School, the president, vice president. President and directors all gave a letter of recommendation to the Lord of Dogs, you know, backing our project, the plaintiffs, the leadership, also. There's a whole lot up there, and it's kind of, I don't understand it. I listened to it, want that, want that, want that, meetings at the Valley School, and it's, it's going nowhere. So, where are we at? So, we received a call, my friend picked up, I didn't know that. So, last Friday evening, I got a Washington DC phone number, well, on my cell phone, mentioned to you, and, well. Assistant Chief Chigarelli with the Mexican phone call from Roseville, so he actually picked it up. So, the important is that our project was one of, they didn't approve the wire up. He went to say, you're federal, grant initiative, submission in the packs, have not failed, and receiving federal, have not failed, and receiving the federal government. Sergeant has a little update, so we talked to the Lord's office again today. Which, by the way, one of your staff will be coming up with press release from her, who's trying to reach out to everyone. They have approved really rank design, and I'm going to leave the problem to all of them, want to read this, yeah. And we do, oh, I had a friend, I'm a assistant chief for that, a fire department, it's like twenty eighty year, there. And he talked to Rose's cheaper staff, and he emailed a letter, he said, that's an official, allowance to go again, people. Well, he did send it to myself, the chief, and Paul, Paul, and I didn't talk yet, it was a decision that, that we find, from the civic, fifty thousand dollars. Best for a training burn building to the HUD appropriations committee, not signed otherwise, for the first. And do, things open up, I was together, the physical year, the appropriations bill, and as mentioned before, there is no match, no match. For the HUD EDA, for which we've issued to draw on these costs. We should make it, every public, every public, we go and have that latest. Next, now, we're going to create all well, other than those for fiscal year, one of the world, which is taking place in June of July, next year. And then, we will give the seven, the next, the bill, we will pay for football, while the entire initial year, both for weather and tech, will be the F D. Since we bought three to four lot, meaning we're a solid year. Right. Yeah, okay. How many events will ask of burn building, not fire, by your own, okay, good. So, you picture these big, big, huge, four, five story structures, made of cement, puffing smoke into the air, well, here it is. This is what we're looking at. So, the model case is not by accident, kind of looks like an average colonial, colonial, our community garden. I mean, we have our raised ranch, a lot of ranches, but that's kind of where our homes look like at that time. This, this little side, well, by four knee, that's where the actual burn room is. So, this doesn't mean like, oh, we're on fire, and stuff on, thus rose the fire, and they're having to burn. That stuff against the law, they can't do that. But what does that mean, because the night, the holes, four thousand, that's it. So, they're like, we found, we paid appropriate worth, that's what we're in there. So, over here from Michigan, this building is forty nine foot, four inches wide, and twenty feet deep. So, you'll note over here, that actually you are our authority, and headquarters, the division, metal building. And we'll be able to match that headquarters building, so this thing will be sitting out on the night, so we'll be in the backyard. Over here, on the right side, that's the nine other towns in Connecticut, that have in our buildings, that we're looking at. So, that just says what we talked about, the amount that you reported, that you don't remember. Yeah, I think that's the number nine. The last one, that is the best one. So. You know what was great about seeing in Facebook post? People involved, she appeared, it goes on this, and I don't get the sense of that, so, I'm glad, thanks for answering the question. The meetings are all posted, come anytime, the, the height. BDFD, T P dot org, my information is on there. Reach out anytime, I'm your fire chief, I'm here for you folks, any question about this, or anything else, just reach out. We don't have any speculation in the know, other kinds. Oh, yes, well, let's get back to the big puffing and puffing, four, five story, the concrete truckers. So, we're going to, we're going to show a video of what this is, what fire. Meaning. I am still glad, not being surrounded. All right, we're not small to the next. So, like I said, you guys are new to the head, and these kids. The idea, Rowair, is to keep the smoke in, in the building, that's what we train. So, you can wind the smoke around. You can see that smoke pick up as the crews are in, that's putting the fire out. All the smoke, kind of, don't start even, even, and then dissipate. And afterward, we're going to do a better shot in a second here. So, this is what we're not getting, a tower, fires on the one, two, three, four, four, third quarter. You can see, it should kind of, when they actually hit the fire, it's, it's all a little bit more, and then that area is done. Remember, only doubt and hay in here, and only four to time.
I think folks are watching this, some sites maybe, and help the training, from the general, like how does that represent, like a real outside or something?
Okay, I, I will answer, so, absolutely, so, we kind of, this, this particular building has a smoke ejector. Didn't really want to do this in our building, but I have to put some time and thought into it. But that's it, that's what it's all, so, you know, this isn't like, the concrete, big burn buildings. So, the smoke ejector, that, I am sure the building you want, I said, I don't know, we need that. And then I started thinking about it from a safety standpoint, if we need to, if someone gets in trouble in there, or goes down. Of course, first thing they'll do, they'll go out all doors and windows, they'll go smoking in there, though. That ejector will, will clear that building out very quick, we can easily find whoever's in trouble right there. So, we might go with that. It does nothing more than what the birdie does, that light most time, you see those, that is smoking out of there. Okay, so.
Watching, you know, you were going to burn the pallets and then the hay, how does that act since they're late, you know?
You like to ask, hang on, fire, move away, I don't know, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, and we look at the building, fuck, with the heat. And the smoke, and then have our host team ready to go, and that, those, that safety officers inside. And they have to go search for the fire, or they have to go search for a victim. And it's in a smoking environment, you're, you're, you can't see a whole lot, so that, that's what it's all about. And also, when you're, when you're in a rig, if you don't know a grid, you know, that intervention team, firefighter, get your pro. Before we start any, live fire, or any fire, one of those house fires, there's always a backup team, ready to go. We've got guys in the building, we have a rig in the house, four yards, so, up the building, a little bit, throw on ladders, and ready to go if someone gets in trouble. So, and how that works. Well, that's all, I have all, I don't have another question for that.
Right now, this is one, don't want to add anything too bad before the update. Okay, well, this is one of the updates, it's not hearing, so, we will do public comment next, just before the update is closed.
I think the chief covered very nicely, and I think.
I think. For the record, I just want to call her, I think it's a bit of a, it's no more. This is a fire training building. The burn room is only one small part of it. And we've called it a burn building for purposes of the application. We also use the word fire training facility and it should be properly and technically called a fire training facility with a burn room is only one small part of it. The water, we catch water, which used to put that out, is trapped in a, uh, concrete slab and then put into a holding tank. The holding tank is then pumped out by a licensed, uh, pumping facility. The Bethany volunteer fire department is already set up this way because all the floor drains in the fire department are set up to drain into a holding tank. That's treated as a, um, is a material that has to be disposed of at a sewage treatment plant. So we're treating the water from the, um, from the fire training facility the same way. Any water that's used to put out that fire will be caught in a concrete slab. Floor drains hooked to a holding tank and the holding tank will be, uh, uh, emptied by a licensed pump. So there's no migration of water used inside the building outside the building. And that is not required. That was something that we felt was a, uh, an enhancement to the facility.
I was, well, I could. Technically, this is not a public hearing. Um, we have people that have signed up to speak. So comments can go on record. Did you sign up to speak? Would you like to sign up? Okay, I'm gonna go in the order that people, I'm gonna close the, the update and I thank you gentlemen for your presentation and your time to, uh, to do that. Uh, the first person that we have on the list is Steve Winter. Is he still here or did he leave or very? Um, come on up and. Um, why don't you come in the back? Only because if you stand in front of me, I won't, we're gonna sue yourself.
Uh, I'm Steve Winter, I, uh, resident of nine months ago. Uh, within town, I'm a member of the fire department here for about eleven years. I've also been a career firefighter for twenty years, Mr. West Parker, uh, in that community. Uh, I'm also a member of the town economic development commission. What they've been asked with is trying to build up the, uh, small businesses here in town, both growth here in town on behalf of, uh, making our town a better place. Um, as someone who lives down the middle of a firehouse, as someone who lives, uh, in proximity to it, as a child, uh, times the burn track of your that, that historical perspective that when the smoke came right down west. I have a feeling that that is where the smoke ended up and I do not want that. Um, historically, these buildings in any town they're built in, they're at the end of coal sack and the industrialized area that were near the forest, the streamer plant, they're not in that land built there. Always that some more dirt, they're not in proximity to either towns. Business district, they're not working across from Little League field and I cross from trash to the kids. Now, I'm saying this to people that I, I left on the line with and glad I do every day. Uh, I've also acquired their training to this day and in my time, I still see them training. I'm willing to go where I need to go for it. Um, but I'm also willing to stand up for it in this concept. I'm happy to have a training building. I do not think that that if within five hundred feet of some remarking business, now a couple which have been tremendous benefit that happens to the firewall. Um, I don't invest in my location for it. I applaud the chief's for their efforts. I applaud him doing this part of what firefighters bring us priority. But I wonder has the mention of this seven, I think, thousand dollar grant to go to the lower, was it that? Hey, what's the feasibility putting in Beacon Falls, I don't know if I wasn't privy to these power sections. Uh, there's eleven acres of Beacon Falls that have been allocated for the, the, like, fire school and has been worked so years. And yes, I got the whole phone and then that, but I want to know is that this project been pitched on that? Because that's a much more appropriate decision. If not, I'd say I'm happy to have a training, but I don't think live fire support generation training will.
Okay, and just before the next speaker speaks, I mentioned presence that we're going to give, because we have a certain number of people to speak with, why do you want to say that three minutes of person?
So just on the, on the valley's whole thing again, uh, we reached out to, uh, state rep down there, Eric Rochelle. He did want to spot for the same range, but I guess we, if we didn't say it, the max on the range normally, uh, say it's the most anyone project can get from it. She wanted to go for that for the Dallas school, the Dallas school said million dollars, we're gonna do nothing for our project. And no, she was back in the building.
Uh, next, I'm going to speak on the.
So I, um. So, uh, I've been out there to pass the grade, um, and Bethany, she's stolen. Um, she hasn't been getting ready for the record tonight, but she can't be here. So Corbin, I was a witness this week and just that made it myself. I cannot hold the meeting and I'm very sorry. As you know, I live just a few feet from the firehouse and property and question. As you also know, Brandon is a very serious gentleman and bought anything foreign in here, I don't know, third sec. You cannot take that chance and not support this project. I'll show a lot of research and. All this, all this complication and unexpected settlement after the time. We will come to some extent, but it's just too great. Please remember on this meeting, my really great show and I should be prepared and bring us a show of this and thank you.
Are you speaking?
So some of you also know, I'm on the board, I'm a chairman. I'm a big, I'm a big audience. Um, I really appreciate presentation at this time, it's been a while to, um, online about that. The B, um, but I think what we come down to be concerned with is the location of the project. Um, across from two restaurants, constantly on our business. Um, more than I'm sure what is impacted. Not sure what the impact on the B on what is a very beautiful park, there often times those foreign animals forces competitions, there are kids playing sports activity on there. We just think that the location is, uh, inappropriate at this purpose. Uh, as far as I know, I think that would be, uh, people that.
Hey, uh, Catherine Sylvester.
Hi, I'm Sylvester, Catherine Flot, it's so my best friend on Facebook, my married. Um, thanks for the presentation, thank you for the work. No one here is questioning the God, it's not, it's not even made for the man. Quite frankly, in the past, a lot of meetings where I said that I can't go back and pick, but there's one in the past, a lot of that metric to be brought back to me, to get out of the pack of itself. You don't, you don't agree with a little fund or do not support the bar. That's not the case. This town is very difficult to hire. However, the potential does a threat to other members of the community. This is rough, this is before, this is rough for me. I may have come through books, right, well, literally, I was good. But I didn't have, I didn't have them in the burn room, it was totally gone and I'm not going to see them again. So I've seen, nah, I agree with you. I also want to know why you're talking about building a deposit to have fifteen year life expectancy, but that's how, how long you have to live for?
That's how long that reminds me.
To learn before and when to pause it, sit there and manage it down, buy it worth a dollar, twenty cents. That's a lot of money. And you know what? Without the tax rules, that's come down with tax payments that we all make. Y'all spend their time so we can do your taxes like I did. That's coming, money coming out of our pockets. Yes, it's grant money. Yes, it's great that Rose is giving some money to that. I'm always happy to see Rose get money in the back. We've gotten enough with, for this project, a project that has like six down. Project that's more appropriate, some more knowledgeable people spoken about already in other communities that are ready and willing to do it. Come on, we can do better than this, but, you know, I'm really, and as far as the really powerful about this is the fact that getting again, we have another situation where the state hope is not not acting in advance. That's great. You can say, I'll tell you, public meetings, show up, public meetings, but how many of you, how, actually, it's the wrong kind of say, it was easy, the faces last seen ever from a meeting. But how many people in our community have been on teaching in time to sit there and read the slums minutes? It quite frankly, but it really don't talk so much about what's going on in those cases. How many people are trying to build planning this many meetings? I mean, my husband and I show up, I really like to dance about these states. Before all the few have I've done. So I mean, this is yet another example of the business. I understand that this is real, somebody in this community went to the door and pulled them about. It's not right. It's not right to bully people who built up for you, you know, and get, get, I'm seeing that here in this town. That we, we can do better than that. We can do better than this project.
Yeah, Jamie Stern.
Oh, is anybody to turn that around so I could address the selectmen? Because it's a board of selectmen meeting and I'd like to address the selectmen, I'd stand behind them if I could.
We can turn around.
Yeah, or you turn around. Thank you so much.
We're about, we're about to out.
Yeah, you don't.
Just take a couple of. Well, it's about the hour. Watch that screen.
Um, Chief Richter, thank you so much for your presentation. Uh, you asked two questions. Why Bethany and why now? And the answer that we heard was why not? I've got two sets of copies of information here. And you know what? The volunteer acts, every one of these towns supports that training, uh, making private, their volunteers, uh, every training, every opportunity. So that, uh, people, people say. Uh, well, I have employees, we have primaries and, uh, really appreciate all of those friends and family. But why Bethany, why now? I say I got two sets of photographs here, uh, of other training facilities in the state of Connecticut. Uh, we have a New Haven training facility. It's located in an industrial area. The second picture is the Fairfield Regional Training Facility. You've got the Fairfield Water Treatment Plant next to it and, uh, town works next to it, Parker Training Facility, uh, stuck on the edge of an industrial site. Uh, we have the Eastern Connecticut Fire School, uh, where is next to recycling and the notch up Frog River is kind of gonna loop there again in an industrial area. You have the Burrville Training School, uh, which has got a, uh, well, it looks like a, uh, open space in a mine next to it. Um, you've got the Farmington Avon Fire Training Facility, uh, which has got next to the water pollution control area. Then you've got a picture in your packet here of the Beacon Falls control site, which yes, has been twenty years admired and political problems between, uh, uh, the valley and our governor. Uh, but right next to that, you'll see there's, there's a, uh, fire, uh, hydrants, plenty of water on that site. Then the last picture is a picture of where is this supposed to be located? It kind of feel like this is Alex's record. And my dad gave me this last picture of theirs and the value of each one. But the lock, stock and barrel, the whole memorial field, Amity Gardens, the Bethany Airport, the C F C Park for the soccer. Uh, Bethany Veterinary Hospital are all over the stone throne. The only location that's not an industrial plant is our proposed facility. So when you ask why Bethany, we want training for our volunteers, but not in our downtown. I'm also a member of the, uh, Economic Development Commission and we are working on what to do with our downtown. And the committee that just started this said, one of the best things we can do with our downtown is leave it alone. Because that way you can have additional facilities and work going on there and recreational activities. So finally, why now? Why Bethany? Don't think it's the right direction. Why now? It seems like there's money. And there's an opportunity. We are flooded with money from architects. We're trying to figure out how to take roads and put in, uh, guardrails that never would have had. We had paper ever since. But, uh, the why now is it seems like it's being pushed. And if you wait six months and get the feeling of people out there, uh, I think you may get a better sense and make a better decision if you ask the town in multiple meetings.
Thanks. Uh, the question, this is more.
Hi, thank you. Uh, I mean, I'm all for training, safety, uh, or higher safety of us, so they have a lot of, of the, uh, time to manage people. Um, two comments, one and I want to let the patient know. Southern CPK, uh, a lot of money, you know, it's probably others back that money, let's say it's tied up in laws and years. We got to train the other places, still seventy fifty years, it's very true. We kind of want to best really, I think, help. Um, but some questions, some questions about the, uh, I'd like to see it again. Where is investment? If you build this facility, you still have to use other facilities for other group training or we completely uh, free from having other facilities. The question is, they will, that will be good. Um, so it's one question. The, uh, okay, so it's talking about, I do, okay, I did that. I wish we'd asked you this, I wouldn't prepare any user number. And pictures of this in the last, in the last, in the last, we get home at a time. And you're gonna respond. So I remember the question, this is the other spot, so there will be anyone who, uh, concerned to the people. This Beacon Falls, I kind of just. People can, you know, that are, it's pretty hard, it really is a lot of engines and that place for it, uh, very extraordinary, um, that is. So if there's doubt, there will be a limit on the one of the damage from. Will we, uh, please consider that for this new, this perspective? That's what we're, it will, uh, other training, all of this possibly, we will, we will consider that. So that, that position. Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody who wants to engage with us. Or, or a bit of work. But any first hand of what it's like. I think that you would do, uh, but it's due to the CEO.
Okay, next one of this, I can't make that of birthing, but the last name is Mary from Bathrop Road.
I, I don't have a parent remarks. I just, I lived in Bethany, uh, I moved here the week I had my son, enjoying this evening. Uh, I am a nurse and I've seen, you know, in my clinical practice, people affected by breathing particulate matter, um, how children are affected, how people with respiratory conditions are affected. And I just wanted to say that I had concerns about the, uh, particulate matter that would be released, the frequency of burns, uh, how close it was to residential property. And I, I didn't, I appreciate that presentation very much. I'm very grateful for the, our department service to our community. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that we're not placing particulate matter where we have our, you know, vulnerable people living or even people that just might have chronic exposure, uh, over time. We, we don't always know if it's having a health problem that it's because they're located in a certain vicinity, um, they would be promptly exposed to this site. So I was just hoping that would be addressed.
Our next one of this, I'm, you have a name?
I am getting that. Uh, Mike, I have one question. Very good presentation, thank you very much for the quality. Uh, that you all, for your service. Uh, my concern is at that point, you can come right up the hill sixty three. When there are other businesses, uh, you know, some very, I think they're very busy businesses, uh, around uh, the diamond abilities and with the smoke is going around and you get rubber records, you're coming with them. I see practice, it's increasing. I see it as kind of liability just before the end. I see track incidents, there's a, I see this kind of liability just before the end of that area. As long as you was burning over there and it's sound. It seems that we're looking at something that, you know, pretty busy area, it's necessary. Um, that's one first concern, I tend to be concerned with that. Area is an area that we used to a lot of activities and I see a lot of conflict coming where. Another time watching the burning house, when some function is done and then that the, the, so those are questions on hand, obviously, I have a, a, a professor, he's loud, I'm, uh, the Derby. Fire and how the fire, those issues, those are because of hazmat issues. And that, that is concerning, my, um, the religion, the two of you that have done a lot of their question aspect.
Uh, yes, is Chris Walker.
Thank you, uh, and thank you, Chief, for your presentation. It was very well done, very clear, easy to understand. Uh, I do want to make a couple of comments, however. Uh, first of all, I know my whole road, which is, um, beautiful fields. And I use the fields for capital burn radiation several times a week. I walk my dog in there. I go back into the trails. No one's mentioned that we have some, uh, town trails in there. And, um, it's just a beautiful and peaceful area, even though it's round sixty three. And there are merchants and buildings and so on. Um, it's a place where everything, not very far, and these woods, and get some quiet time. So that's one of the beautiful things now that area. Also, kids flying on it, they have soccer fields, they're, um, you know, all kinds of things, the green monkey is there now, the spread is on ball. And it's just like a real town accent. So I appreciate space. Uh, the chief manager, the management of the building that is proposed to go up in that area. It is inside of my house. My house is forty feet, five twenty five feet, and it's certainly very forming. It's a small castle, but I like to think it's big enough. Um, and that's beside the issue. So that's my, my second comment. Um, and I think you, I don't know as much about Beacon Falls area than I hear about as part of this town, I already named it. Um, I think that if I give that a location, I haven't, I'm not an expert on these things. But I don't think this is the right location. I would like to say, however, that men and women have a better part in our legacy for the community. Um, the fact that we put hours and hours into training, being on a fall. And unfortunately, I had firsthand experience when my husband had a medical incident that was very serious. And the ambulance was there in minutes and he was at the hospital in, uh, Atlanta. So those two things and things are really valuable to all of us in this town. And I really want the fire department to have the training they need in the place they needed and at least be in the right place. Thank you.
Uh, Frank from Bethany, my home.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Dr. Carl, hello, I'm new, although I believe in that for forty five of my four games. Um, I don't want to say because I think everyone has covered how I feel. Um, like I didn't want to say, but I think the location is not appropriate. I live, uh, four twenty one very low and which is basically the problem, we've gone to our house and transfer station. Um. I agree, I am grateful for the fire department, but so a lot of guys on the fire department. Uh. But I just think the location for this type of structure is not the right location. Um. I have seen a lot of the other, uh, burn buildings and, uh, training facilities. And for my understanding, it appears they, um, they're all located in more industrious areas. I can see there's a facility being opened in quarry, we can get together, Beacon Falls. Use the money that is allocated to somehow team up with someone there, reallocate the money for the location in Beacon Falls, that's no possibility. Uh. But it's just my personal thing.
Okay, um, before we close out, uh, which is the last speaker, just want to make sure if there's anyone who's actually on the Zoom call. If you want to say something, if you could please register again, so I know that you'd like to say something. Go ahead, um. Go ahead.
Yes, I. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, and I did send a note to be on the list. Um, so the first thing I want to say is that, um. Um, I, I, the. I and this town appreciate the volunteer fire department. And I fear that the way this issue has come up. And has, the way it has come out to the public. Has adversely affected, um, the fire department's application regardless of merits. I, um. I do not understand why this is a selectman's meeting. Um, what advice the selectmen got to do it this way? And I, I do, um, feel that the merits are being over overshadowed. Um, by how the town has learned about this, which is that we didn't really know what was going on. And why this is a select, a special selectman's meeting? That's my, my first point. My second point is how do we know when there's a special selectman's meeting? And, and does this mean that tomorrow's meeting, the regularly scheduled meeting is canceled? When other business for the town needs to be taken care of? Um. Uh, so that's my second point. On a wholly different matter, uh, related to the agenda that was published. Um. How do we see attachments to the notice of agenda before the meeting? There are a number of items on the agenda that have an asterisk showing that there are attachments. And we can't see those attachments to the best of my knowledge. Um, I noticed there's one item that was the subject of the proposed charter. That is near and dear to me, that I cannot see having to, with an ethics proposal. I think that that's something that I would have liked to see before this meeting. Um, and final point has to do with. For the umpteenth time, asking, how do we ensure that all public meetings? Uh, have access via Zoom? Um, I understand that there are some public meetings that do not have access. To via, thank you very much, Fairwood Road, Bethany.
Thank you, fine. Um, thank you. Uh. Sheila. Melissa. Thank you. One is in the middle of the. Uh, I really, from my, it's, um, that's the one class, which now, um, because I'm coming to insurance. Seems to be, you know. So I'm curious about your experience from the past. My name is Paul, I'm a student, this is going to be ten and done, ten and done to that. I'm enjoying it for a fifth year in your school. Do we have any reports about what, what's about? Uh, we just, and we're bringing the air, and we're doing, and whatever is there. I just want to clarify something that, uh, I watched you speak before. Come on up. Yep. You just. I believe in the law, just to be short. But that's not about.
Okay. Uh, hi, my name is Anna, um, I'm living in Bethany, I'm a student, and I, and so, uh, I'm going to go to high school here, to Abby. And, um, I think my biggest concern is like they've got all these spares, some are peeled and a whole bunch of activities almost built there. And I mean, I know that with the, like, the location, because I'm really worried that's like a part of the, that's really the freaking grace. Joy to our kids and like, that's why we live in that, I mean, for, for our kids to go to build here and it's very good district for them. And that's one of my biggest concerns, that it's like the location where, I think like that we're the bottom of the business. And my other concern is like, we're, I mean, we're, they're going to get a water for like, for the fixing time. We have, we have sometimes we have problems with our pump, like we don't get enough water for ourselves, so I'm wondering, um, that's one of the questions that I have. So thank you for attention and thank you for the presentation, it was really good one, I wish I would want to do.
Uh, just to clarify something that I'm gonna, the reason that this is especially important is that we're supposed to have our, uh, meeting tomorrow. Because we are having a call here on a budget tomorrow. We need to go to church at the same time. So, and here's what tomorrow is regular monthly meeting and will be agenda to tonight, and because of this, uh, being moved off of this regularly scheduled night, I will be five to five, everything will just morning. We can only address the options that are on the agenda, we cannot add anything with none of this stuff, what is currently on this agenda. So it's not a special meeting just for this stuff and it's a, it's a rescheduled special meeting because of the public hearing tomorrow. Otherwise, we would have had everyone here tomorrow. So that's, have to adjust if ours are concerned. Fine, so I had this long start in the middle of that, it's important, right at the corner of which she owns and handles the building. Where in, within three quarters of a mile to one of the coast side. And I have a mother of a thirteen year old woman, has a two full year of lungs. Um, I'm concerned for my home, but I'm concerned actually for the residents of Bethany and I'm just in my garden. Uh, this part may be speaking, the increase in particulate matter from NBA has caused residents of different communities, one of them, the increase in particulates and different layer issues. Not present in the back or, um, forward. Um, as somebody that's not in such part, this part. I don't. On how this is fast people. Um, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that, um. You know, I don't want this is going to wind up being a regular, not a lot of smoke and particulate. Is going to come out, and how are we going to keep it, with having to burn fifty micrograms per cubic meter that's required from the state? Are there any monitors being lit off after the plane and around town to be able to see how this, you know, air flow, and where it goes too? And how it just gets through the, um, you know, for, and how it's against people. And I'm saying it's not only in her mother, you know, that, that it affects me drastically, for my children, it's for everybody since then before. Um, in addition, we've spoken about it financially and somebody who want, you know, who's going to be, uh, for insurance, but it's also maintenance of the building. This is not one of the people that hold the heart of what they want to person, and I want to go up here, you can, you can say that everybody. They are amazing gentlemen, and I'm using that personal mind to volunteer to be able to benefit people who want in this room. And they need training, I'm all for, you know, going in and giving that the money and the respect. That they need to be able to do, the very fact that they have them, because their lives are at risk. And so are others when they're trying to help us. But the location that is being proposed, I put it one of the waiting room. I, I just feel I'm going to affect the people that not only did you benefit for our, uh, my house. But I want to just know how far, you know, in one of the, that day, I'd like to research more, I want to know how it's going to wind up. You know, being monitored in the future and, you know, how financially will it be responsible for insurance and maintenance of the building, et cetera. So, and thank you very much for like explaining, you know, the ones that I'm, that they will give them. Um, don't forget to take care of them. Sure. Okay, is there anyone else who's over the, who's here to the public comment? Cause I know I put aside when we get home for the bus meeting. Okay. Barbara. Which actually. Okay.
Can Paula repeat what she said about the meeting schedules for today and tomorrow?
Um, it's mentioned that tomorrow's meeting, the regularly scheduled meeting is canceled because of the public hearing. And because it canceled that meeting, it is rescheduled for tonight at a special meeting. Because it's not a regularly scheduled meeting, so it's had to be scheduled as a special weekend. Okay?
Thank, thank you.
Okay, go.
Uh, and it's, I guess, or the eight seventy hair and clothes. And I don't repeat what everyone said, um. The evening. Less reading part of town. But they had a, it was not only the only lot. You have to know. And the thing I was, I'm thinking of. It is the north, go on somewhere and have somebody who were aggressive, weather grill. Make you go inside. From, you know, third party gun, because your neighbors have it together and they can't manage their girl properly. So that's, I mean, that's not, uh, honestly. But it's enough to make it that. And that coupled with, you know, the businesses, wanting to keep, uh, four nine, two minimum. For the restaurants that a lot of them have been. Would it maybe not be long? Weekend, Saturday, because bar here, the presence. They go in the times, they have jobs. So when they go training, that's, you get the training, it's not weekends. Which is unfortunately, when that word town tends to be the busiest. With community events, the restaurant, and a lot of crap, and people is willing to do that hard after all this. Totally, yeah. Thank you.
It's gonna happen, closing remarks for the chief and them closing public comment.
Okay, well. Thank you all for the time, we're gonna even, uh, we are here for our, for you. Um. Everybody's certainly allowing their opinion to, uh, we are. And. Not, not everyone agrees, but. This is what it is and what the words of encouragement are, not so much, not encouragement for our product. But some words kind of about the way you do a lot of it and we appreciate that and I just want you all to know that. That we're with the project, we're with. I want to know, we appreciate your nice words for us, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, so much, it's a thank you tonight in, uh, public comment and thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation and your efforts. And just so you know, you mentioned potentially using the funds for another location. That's not possible. When we apply for plans, grants are very specific. You have certain criteria, eligibility, and when you're applying for something, that's what you're getting the money for. We can't all of a sudden turn around and take and say to Rosa, oh, we'd like to take that seven hundred fifty thousand and go somewhere else with it. Their application, this, but the applications for grants are very specific and you have to be held to that grant. It would have to be something completely different, a different grant for a different project. So right now, this is the project that they applied for. These are the funds that go for this specific grant. So I just want you to understand kind of how the grants work. When you apply to something, you're.
When you apply to something, you're applying to something very specific. And when those money, those funds are granted, it's for whatever's on that application.
You have the permission to.
You'd have, you'd have to go back and get special permission to whatever subcommittee, have to go through a whole other process. And I want you to know something. We applied for a million dollars from Rosa last year. Almost a year ago, almost a year ago, to do renovations on this room, parts of other parts of the town hall. We are still waiting for that money. So when people complain about the audio, visual, whatever in this room, we are waiting a year now to get those months. So these guys did this application for the fiscal year twenty four. They were, very well may not see those funds for another year.
Do you think about like where you are in the office of a room?
No. For the, for the, are you talking about the fire departments on occasion? No, no. Right now, it's just Rosa is moving it forward to the next part of the process, which goes to subcommittees.
But this board has.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm sorry. No. We just gave them like our blessing to say, go forward and check out the process. And then what happened within that two week span is Rosa's grant became available. So they literally had what? A week, ten days? Oh, sorry, three days to put an application together for the funder. And now potentially they won't see that funding for another year.
But as far as the town goes, they have their people to build the building a big amount.
Well, they have to go through the whole planning and zoning process. It's not, it's not just our fault.
That was my question. Do you own the planning building or are you ready for anything yet?
John Paul? My understanding, is it going to planning and zoning on Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes, that's your question.
Uh, as far as town rules, yes. If they don't get the funding, it don't happen.
Yeah. Rosa agreed to move it forward. Rosa agreed to move the project forward to the next step. So. For this particular, at this point, no, because I don't know where it's going from here. It has to go through the next part of the process, which is the planning. Well, it's not, it's not the residents' fault to move it to planning and zoning.
It's, it's, you'll, you, you can, you can appear, you can appear at planning and zoning.
Connie, you're supposed to be discussing plan and nothing, you know, specific versus everything that we've been discussing tonight?
We, we don't have jurisdiction over planning and zoning. That's a separate, that's a separate bonus.
Being rushed to get through, you know, the building department and for you to come to fruition. And I don't know, I talked about this today.
I understand.
And so.
I understand that.
And it's already gone to planning and zoning. You know, the journey, it's all been commented in time that we've spoken or talked about this or was it just?
It was ju, it was brought to the board of selectmen at the March meeting.
And it was brought to us a day or two.
There's, they want it slower.
I know the quick one didn't want to have a barbecue, but I'm literally there practically in a butter and we're even talking. We don't.
They let us from once again.
Right? My children say.
Doesn't there have to be some meeting where we get to ask questions?
John?
I mean, they can, they can go to zoning and they can, they can, you can, you can go to the zoning. Theoretically, theoretically, yeah, Mia can have them with him.
I have a question. Literally not the same as you want.
The town and checks the group.
I can make this way to it not the funding, grandma doesn't lose any money, but.
Just a question.
I'm doing part of the, you get a term. So why can't we just give this an order of high welfare?
What?
Waiting for the, this, yeah.
Now, are you ready for the town meeting request? Like the town meeting request to go.
So.
Right, the town meeting has to bring the grant.
We could come up with a, we could give us.
No, right.
I'm sorry.
And we have to, right, proper process. It's going to, it's going to come back to town meeting. That's the, that's the, that's the, accepting the grant. We would just don't try to, so that.
Can I, can I interrupt for one second? One second. The town attorney, we just had a little discussion of the actual process that's going to be happening.
And I appreciate that. And this all can happen as a matter of process, right? Because as a matter of process, people are not, feel, feel they're not informed properly. Because things are published and you don't see that publication. Uh, and so I fully appreciate that there is. But let, let me try to explain procedurally where we're at and where we're going and the opportunities that you will have. So tonight is your first night here you've been able to come out. And there'll be other opportunities. Uh, and uh, so uh, I'm going to, I'm going to explain if you give me a moment. And I'm going to try to walk you through the process. And I'm going to try to leave you wholly informed and probably not satisfied, but I'm going to leave you wholly informed. Uh, so yes, it is scheduled to go to zoning on Wednesday night. Uh, that may not be, that'll be the first night. It may not be the last night of zoning. And it depends on what zoning decides. They may decide to keep their public hearing open and continually, continue it to a second night. It depends on how their process proceeds. Okay, uh, that'll be determined on Wednesday night. That'll, you know, their public hearing will be opened. Uh, and depending upon that, how that presentation goes, it'll either be closed. They will either make a decision on that night or they will adjourn and make a decision on their next meeting night. That's up to them. We'll find that out on Wednesday. Uh, so uh, you will have an opportunity to be heard at that public hearing on Wednesday night. So you can come out on Wednesday. Uh, the town meeting will have an opportunity to accept the grant at some point in the future. Right? Because Rosa will be at some point in the future, be saying, you've been approved for a grant in the amount of that amount that was posted. If this town does not want to accept the grant to build this facility, you can reject that, those funds. The town meeting is what accepts the money. No, that'll be a town meeting.
Just, you know, the chair. There's no public comment that.
Well, okay, then, then they're not putting up their public hearing. So then the public hearing will be a day following them. It's a very long agenda that night. So uh, so, so then it'll be the, probably the next meeting that will be the public hearing on this. So uh, but what we posted, so uh, uh, the point being that there's a process.
But on Thursday, on Wednesday, they could pass.
No, no. They're going to receive the application and then schedule the public hearing. Okay? So uh, but you, again, we're now informed that we're keeping our eyes open, our ears open to this process. Okay? And Nina, who's your zoning enforcement officer, who's uh, works here at town hall, you can reach out to and ask her uh, to receive information on this application. And you know, she'll put her on an email distribution list as to when this will be scheduled. Uh, so uh, we're now looking at uh, we're in uh, we're in April. So it'll, we'll make it to the May meeting, you know, like, okay? Uh, so, but the key then is you have to ask yourself, then when that funding is made known, does this town want to reject those funds?
It won't be the main.
Okay, it's not, no, it's, it's not likely that those funds are going to be made.
So we're gonna ask the fund before we know that it's done.
We're already asking the fund. No, no, the application's been made. When the funds are, are, are made known, that are allocated to this town. Okay, we have to accept them. The town meeting is the body that accepts.
Wednesday.
That's going to be some point in the future.
Whenever the funds are available, we'll have a meeting.
And that'll be, let's say, six months from now, eight months from now, maybe it's a year from now, right? Because as, as the first elect woman has said, we're still waiting for funds, right? From last year for this facility. So that's the.
The question that I think everyone in this room wants to know is even if we turn down the funds, that doesn't prevent this structure from being built.
You don't have the funds, you can't build the structure.
Then you can always turn that one down.
The town meeting, the town meeting, again, this is a town meeting form of government. You are the town meeting. You gotta remember, this town, this town is function, functions by the power of the town meeting. You are the town meeting. Okay, so that's, that's what makes this town. So you come out at a town meeting and you control how, whether or not this facility gets built. That's how this town functions.
How does the town, for everybody in the town, not if they spoke to people that don't know.
It will be, there's a mailing.
We all need to wind up being informed. Everybody that's spoken this evening already has already said that they are, that they have no problem with a training facility. They do not like the location. I don't know if anybody here that has spoken publicly this evening has been pro this location. And so it's imperative that this town opens it up and allows the residents. I found out about this twenty minutes, I mean, I ran a park with everybody in this town. It needs to be more than a piece of paper that's included with everybody else. Please, we're begging you.
Okay, if, if. Okay, if the money is approved by Rosa de la Rosas. It will be scheduled a town meeting to accept or deny the grant. Hold on. So you will get, you will get a mailer, in the mail.
Well, tell me.
Notice in the.
Posted to every household.
If this one, if mine is with twenty dollar items, if you want. Let me, okay. Will we, will we do termings? Being physically responsible to have multiple ladies on the ball? Because it costs us anywhere between three to four thousand dollars to run a special meeting or a town meeting. We have to make it, we have to be posting. It, it's very expensive to have spent three thousand dollars for one item in the ball is not as easy as buying. So when we have a town meeting, we try to make sure that we have all, I mean, spread through all to make it an efficient amount of.
You do, no, you do, you do. Eye to my eye, to my eye. That's what we should do. The selectmen have heard the rest, the concerns within the room. And I think what we should do is uh, for now, for purposes of the process, there's the opportunity to participate at zoning. We have a meeting schedule, which is to accept an application, not for purposes of a, of a hearing. Uh, okay, there is the acceptance of the grant. Okay, and uh, the selectmen have heard your concerns.
See, I have a question. Excuse me.
I think from, from a process standpoint, uh, I, yes, sir.
Excuse me, I have a question as well.
Yes.
We don't have a full, a complete decision two days from now on this. You know, there's some very reasonable questions, but I would not be answering. So if the application is eaten, but don't allow a decision to get the residents' mind to speak it over and committees not to be given a lot of questions.
Okay, again, there's a, there's, just from a timing standpoint, you gotta understand once an application is submitted to zoning, it starts a timeline. So uh, we, we have some control over that, but you know, there is a timeline that we, we're, a statutory timeline that we have to work within. But we, I can work with the, the zoning commission to, 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 and the, and the, the fire department to extend out that timeline. So that we uh. No, no, no. So we have, we have months to, to kind of. Sixty five days.
Can I ask a question?
Exactly. But I, I think we've heard concern.
It's Connie. I'm online. Can I ask a question? I would like to know why we would make a process to ask for funds for a specific purpose such as this, which affects community this way without having had prior approval of the town? And maybe this is a lesson going forward?
Thank you.
Did you, did you get Mike, understand my question?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Thank you. Go ahead, Sheila. No, the fire department applied for the grant through Rosa de la Rosas.
Okay.
They apply for the grant without your knowledge? Didn't know about this grant, Paula?
No, we don't. What, Rosa, Rosa is helping by moving this application forward. This is a long way off. Okay, you know what? We, we've got, we've got, we've got the feel for the room. There's, there's a clear feel for the room. We get it. This is a long process and like I said, I'm going to be happy when I get the million dollars that I applied for over a year ago, or about a year ago. So we've, we've got a long way to go on this and now we're, planning and zoning will do their hearing and their, their sequence of events. But right now, um, we understand everyone's concern. There has been a clear message that, that has been given. But it will be the town who, when the, when the grant gets approved, it has to be brought forward to the town for approval. That will be the opportunity for the town to yay or nay the project and not accept the funds. So we get, we understand. Um, and I appreciate everyone's input. Um, and I, and I do thank you all for coming out and, you know, sharing your concerns. Uh, we want to do obviously what's best. Uh, but just follow along and usually, I don't know how many people actually still get the paper version of the New Haven Register. It's becoming sort of an obsolete thing. Um, but that's where postings go for notices for hearings, uh, for planning and zoning. So if you watch the New Haven Register on a daily basis, you will see at what point hearings are noted or posted. Town meetings, we, by state, by, um, by town code, we have to send something to every household. Okay, so we have like twenty one or twenty two hundred households. We have to do a mailing to every single household for notification. And then, and it has to be done no less than five days prior to a particular movement. Yes, well, and see right now, the, the state legislature is also trying to push. where I said to you, cost like two thousand dollars to do a town meeting for posting it on the back. The newspapers are not happy, because we are pushing to be able to post those on our website, which we do anyway. But most people don't get the New Haven Register anymore, so it's, it's, it's kind of, it's like, yes, like throwing money away to post in the newspaper. So municipalities, we are pushing the legislature to stop having to do that in order to stay a thousand times, to put it in for one day, and no one sees it. So, but we do post them on our website. So, and we do bail to certain households, because we are obligated to do so.
Yes.
Okay, and like I said, we got the feel for the room, there's no question, yes. Not everyone has signed up for code red. Unfortunately, believe it or not, it's compared to our number of households, I don't even know if we break a hundred. It's, it's a minimal amount of people that sign up for it. As much as we try to push people to do it, with the, it was, you know what, I got lambasted for making the messages, and I got lambasted for stopping to get the messages, so I can't win no matter. It's okay, I get it. You know what, we're going to take five minutes to just sort of regroup, and we really appreciate your welcome.
Got to get in.
Appreciate it. Thank you. It's obviously something I personally am passionate about. I think, you pass over as, when saying that, and so I can't really, but that's a good answer.
It's the next, it's the meeting after that.
I would like to speak, Paula. I would like to speak, I have a couple of questions. Well, on the record.
You can ask your questions, there's no one here to give you your answers now. Well. Anybody in the fire department here? But I don't think they can answer the questions.
Well, the question, I've asked you so many times, is it going to be used?
I'm sorry, say again?
Your notes that I got from the fire chief. I was, it said, two or more times a month by other towns. Okay, and two to three times, thirty-six times a year by our local fire department. So the question is, how many times is it actually going to be used for red?
They, they gave you, they gave you.
That's, that's, that's exactly what I'm going to do. If one's very. The statistics that were provided, two or more times a month, maybe, for, by other towns. And then if it's not, it's five, definitely, that's red, so that was the question.
It's just.
How many times will it be used for red? Well, that is the question. It took to know actually what the usage is. Would be charging other towns to use cars.
I'm sure they probably would investigate what the other towns are doing.
Okay, I don't know if there's anybody here to answer that, but.
And what is your other question?
That was pretty much it, I want to know usage. And, you know, in fact, and stuff, the people that holds, for years. About this wall, that's, that's what people are concerned around. And the water, the water is going to be bought and trashed and pumped out and transported somewhere. And how would they do a bit of that?
It gets picked up by. Right, it gets picked up.
Like a bad guy.
She wanted to know usage.
Yeah, yeah, so, yes. You, yeah, you said, it would be used two or more times a month, perhaps, in other towns. What is the normal thing that, um?
Already went over that, but. That was on there, yeah. Around two thousand dollars.
So someone to rent a car, so it would be two thousand.
We don't know until you get the numbers, in other words.
We're not doing it for profit like these other.
We, we have, there's a, there's a cost to construction. If they decide to rent it, and that's one of the things we're discussing about now, is, if they decide to rent it, they have to come up with a number. That number's going to be predicated by what did it cost to construct over a thirty-year lifespan. So it may be twenty-five hundred bucks, it may be fifty-five hundred bucks. Until we, you finally get the, the final construction number, you really have no way to put a number on that, and that's to be determined. And I think that's what I said.
The seven sixty-eight is not the.
I'm sorry, what?
The cost for the grant, the total bus, total project cost?
That's the projected project cost, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay. And the best part is, we use it, you know, two to three times a month, just looking at how often the burn part.
And that's when we're going to resolve that for P and C meeting, we're in discussions with that now. So we will, we will put a number on that. What's that?
Yes, you're not sure.
We're going to put a number on it, and, and until we get that resolved, I don't want to put a number on it that may be right or wrong. I may say three times a month, and that may be too many, it may be only once a month. We're trying to resolve that issue now.
Okay. The other thing is, if you could just go back and talk about the value, and I know you said, they, you know, want this money, they want, I know that you can't even say it, they don't want it.
Build a valley school.
Fourteen, I thought.
Yeah, it's twelve to fourteen million dollars for them to build that school.
So they think this is.
They do not, they do not want a million dollars. And this, or any building like this, on the middle of their property, with no classrooms, with, you know, place to house their engine. We have an engine, we have all the fire equipment, because that's how involved we are in that system. They don't want, a million dollars does not help us.
Yeah. I mean, that, again.
They can't even. Can't even level the property, that.
Yeah.
Well, by the way, you know, I have this one meeting with someone that I've heard decide three times. From the brown side, so I know what happened.
In all fairness, we cannot compare either the Vulcan or either the Fairfield buildings, what we're doing here, those buildings, when there's so much old school burning and door regulations, that they're practically destroyed. The fact that Vulcan is even standing in America.
I built, I built the New Haven building, and they trashed it, they trashed it.
And it's very, and so when we look at projection, the cost of putting this dirt and that in, and then we try to rent, so Fairfield.
This is not a money making, understand that.
No, 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 I'm talking about that. Having to get.
You're missing everybody involved, everybody who's seen, you know, slower. It's a trailer building. And missing a much bigger.
Things, no. Well, I think what they're trying to tell you is the majority of the use of the building is going to be.
You know what, maybe, you know, everybody, you know, we're just not. So we don't know.
Like that, when they sit, somebody, people that were never grilled, they've learned. Just stuff in snow, but not here, that's why, that's why I'm here.
It's using like new, how many, or the whole, what is this open, like, all that stuff, and what, I mean, really, really, there, because if it can be used in a fairer site, it's part of that, and it's huge, like, the classroom, everything there.
I just have a question, that, if you allow the town to trade, you have other companies or, or you, municipal aid that backed you up? Is there a cost to that?
No, because.
You do the same thing for them, it's reciprocal.
There's, yeah, there's, we'll, we'll, we'll cross, because he said no, but yes, here's the cost. You roll your engines every time you roll, there's a cost, fuel, everything. So if, if, if there's no such thing as free cheese.
True, okay. All right, so.
And just one other thing, too, by the way, airport is industrial. If I want to smoke that, it's legal to zone.
When, when you've approved it, you're in the, you're in the town, it's, it's not approved in that.
Two thousand and six, we burned, I mean, the first the school, town, here's the plan. And a small training facility. Well, see, that's what I'm saying, it's not necessarily burnable intention, it's a fire training facility. The program was only one small.
I understand, but was that true?
Yes, that's, that.
Fire training?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
We have one, remember. Trying to get these guys to focus on this, the, the, and that's. Yeah, it's, it's, we got to push it out.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you're done.
Thank you, you can leave that there, I'll hold it up, no, it's, I'll hold it up. Okay, it is no problem.
Can I have a copy of the grant?
It's not nine eleven, and I'm looking for motion to accept on March seventh, second on the March seventh notice.
Second to approve March seventh notice. March seventh minutes. Can't hear. The March seventh minutes. Do I approve March seventh? Don, Don motioned, I'm looking for a second. So that's Liz, okay.
Yes.
Started the packet.
Hold on just a second. Yes, as long as the project, as, as it is known today, those highlights, yes.
Okay. All in favor, but no other comments, expressions? Okay, all in favor of approving March seventh minutes? Okay, perfect. You were given a sheet with two tax refunds.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to accept total tax refunds, right, in a total amount of three thirty-sixty-four.
Okay, second?
I second that.
Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor of approving tax refunds? Okay, we do not have cemetery deeds of this month. We have, next item is an appointment of an alternate, Paul Manreino. I pronounced that correctly, for the inland weapons commission, can I have a motion to approve Mr. Manreino for the inland weapons commission? Go through, okay. Okay, any comments, questions? This is recommended by Chris Sullivan, who's the chair.
Do we need to use the microphone?
Well, there's somebody on that, someone with a chair here. I'm trying to hold it.
Oh, isn't it through there?
Well, I'm blocked by the, by the lap. So all in favor of approving Mr. Manreino as an alternate, and I, okay, as is unanimously required. Next item is the hazard mitigation plan for twenty twenty-three, and I did get a notice today from, from Liz. Notice today from SRAV, the consultant that works with them, that has approved the twenty twenty-three, SRAV has not mitigation plan update, ten minute adoption, and the adoption basically is all of the resolutions from all fifteen towns. So you have that resolution in your packet. Can I have a motion to approve my sign of signature? Okay, all in favor? I, beautiful. I'm asking that we could uphold on item number eight and table it again, because I'm contacted by Woodbridge with regard to potentially having a mutual agreement with them, because they actually require help potentially being able to drop off mattresses to us in turn, using them for a hazard waste drop off. So kind of a, a mutual thing, but we're scheduled to have, I think Leslie, you and I, as public works manager, have a meeting, I think it's next Monday, to talk to their finance director, their first electman. And I'm not sure if Warren Connors will be on that conversation to their public works director.
Is that the only piece of it that, that is going to change?
I don't know, this is an initial conversation, they literally just reached out last week and said, can we have a conversation about this? So I don't want to sign off on this, I mean, we still have a couple of months before it expires. So if we table it one more month, it won't be detrimental. But I'd like to be able to have that conversation with Woodbridge. So we can make a.
A person to be appointed as well?
I'm sorry, say again?
It was supposed to be somebody appointed to this, this role, this on the water.
And, and we haven't done that yet either, so we, we have to do that, but.
Right.
But if, but if we, if we don't have to. If, if we work on a municipal mutually, you know, agree. If if we work on a municipal mutually, you know, agreeable thing with Woodbridge, then we wouldn't need that rep on there because we wouldn't be using them. So, but I want to have that conversation with Woodbridge before we commit to this, because it might be mutually and fiscally advantageous.
I think it's good, although I heard loud and clear what Leslie was saying about an auto park valley and the way they operate going around, but.
Well, I, I think Woodbridge has someone come to them. So, but they do it a couple of times a year. So we we're paying thousands of dollars to have seven people go. Or they're telling us seven households. It could be the same person going seven times.
Ten thousand dollars.
So, um. Okay, yeah, so may I have a motion to table it? So make me a further, so move to a second.
Second.
Second, okay, we will tell all in favor. I tabled. We had to, but we did one of our grants, had to have a town policy for ethics, ethics policy. So then we we sort of piggybacked off of Orange, because they're one of our district towns. And so what was in the packet is basically comparable to Orange's ethics policy. It's not an ordinance, it's just a policy. So we can approve this policy. I mean, it's some later, we potentially want to make it an ordinance. We would have to bring it to the town to do so. But right now, for some grants, we need to have an ethics policy in place. So, uh, that's why I'm bringing this forward now, so that we've been, I gave it to you last week, so that we have plenty of time to review. And it's piggyback, like I said, mostly towards just. We looked at Woodbridge's, but they had like ten bulleted points, and it really wasn't very robust or concise, so I felt courage was a little more needy.
It covers.
Policy.
I, I move to accept ethics policy as.
I I haven't read it in detail, and I I actually would like to hear a little bit more about it. I just don't know. I'm sure I approve any type of ethics policy, but I don't. I don't know.
Do you want to table it? Do you want to take this item till you have more time to.
Are you gonna jeopardize anything in play right?
At this point, I don't believe so. No, we could table it for one more month, and you have an opportunity to to look at it more in depth and and if you have any questions.
Yeah.
If you do have any questions, bring them forward prior to the meeting so that we can address.
We don't have one of these in place right now.
No, no, this is why we had to, we had a grant that.
This is from Orange, and there was another one that was under consideration. Where was that?
I looked at Woodbridge's, and it was one page of some bulleted points. It really was not very substantial.
This is, it's, this, it's a standard ethics policy that's been in place in Orange for a couple of decades.
Pretty long.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty thorough. It's pretty thorough, so, yeah.
Okay, I think I just want to know it.
All right, so why don't you make a motion to table it till May?
I will table it for you.
You want to make one a second? Okay, all in favor? I, and that will give you the opportunity to review it a little more in depth, um, when we bring it forward. Maybe we want to add. Well, by all means, look at it, and like I say, but bring the suggestions ahead of time so that if we have to change anything or.
Agenda is good. Thirteen, fourteen.
Well, we'll, we'll be, we'll be pretty quick with the others.
If you have any comments, just send them to me so you don't create a meeting issue, and then I'll, then I'll bring them back to the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, with the Clipper Drive, that was basically still on hand, because we are still waiting for the Mylar and other documentation to complete that and accept it. Uh, the welcome signs, like I said, the last couple of meetings, I've given the owners of the Shell gas station all of the information they just have yet to get back to tell us if they want to proceed with it. What do we got next? Uh, the investment services provider is just an update. Leslie, you want to give a quick update on that one?
Yes, um, the board of finance has approved a fiduciary advisor to handle in response to the investment services provider, RFP, and the contract is currently with legal for review, so we can proceed.
Okay, perfect. Now, grants, do you want to give a quick four-one-one on?
A quick four-one-one on the grants?
Yeah.
Harper, there's still two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars available, so we need ideas and suggestions on how best to utilize those funds in the town. Um, see, the contractor's received, Don is working on scheduling all the work for public works. Um, purchase order's been put out for the guide rails, and Tilcon should be coming in within the next week to actually do the, um, the milling and the paving will happen within two weeks of that as well. So we are moving forward with that, and that is a reimbursement grant, and we are funding twenty-five percent of the fossil now. Um, the Cabrera, all the documents are submitted. It's two separate grants of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We will be receiving the funds, it's just a question of when, and if they're going to be reimbursement or upfront money. I believe they're upfront monies, which is good, but that doesn't mean it won't change between now and when the, that the contracts actually come through.
Do you know what it might be?
It can take anywhere from one to four months to get the contract after they say the money is yours.
We applied for both Delaro's grant and Cabrera's grants within a week to ten days.
It was part of last year.
And we literally are still waiting for all of that funding to to come forward, so. It's hurry up.
It's a long process.
This was a HUD grant?
That's it.
We wrote to Delaro's, million dollars as a HUD grant, yes.
Okay, that's right, that's right, not near Mark.
Yeah. Um, and we are, John has initiated the engineering scope of work for the million dollars to bring everything else up to code and speed and modernize within the town hall building. Including HVAC for this room. And the Cabreras will give us really good audio, video, visual stuff in there. Um, Trip Grant, I believe you are finalizing the application on that to do Round Hill Road, which you're estimating to cost about four hundred thousand dollars. And since we are the only rural town in SRAV, we should not have a problem receiving those funds. But it is a competitive grant process for the entire state, but this is the first year it is in existence. So therefore, all the engineers that are involved with this program feel as though it would be very unbecoming of the state not to award one to each of the council and government, so. Round one, score one for the team here, Bethany should receive money.
And when we had the initial meeting with the DOT members. And they were pretty enthusiastic, because Don had some stuff already in place with engineering and that kind of, so they were, they were thrilled that we were that far ahead.
Shovel ready.
Yeah, being shovel. Uh, Simpson Property, we are still waiting for the final approval of that survey. I I just don't know.
Just send, send an email out.
Again, yes, it's, this is, once again, we are, and wait. Um, okay, we have come to the end of the rainbow. Um, do I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Okay, non-negotiable, all in favor? I thank everyone, for those of you that stuck it out, thank you so much.